All right, I'll mute you. All right, well, we'll go ahead and get started, guys. Looks like we've got, let's see, 37 family members on the line. We've got quite a bit to cover today, so lots of announcements. Definitely wanted to be able to have time for you guys to ask any questions and just kind of have some open discussion about what we're doing here. So, thank you, everyone, for joining. So good to see some of your faces, hear your voices. Kind of the, one of the interesting things that comes of this, you know, everyone's asking, "How you doing?" You know, since our news of last week with our positive case, I told everybody, "Man, Thursday night was rough. I had my own little pity party, but then realized, you know, why we're here." So, we're full steam ahead here. It was good to be able to talk to all of you, some of you individually, express your questions and concerns. So, yeah, it's refreshing to be able to hear your voices and get all of your input on what's going on here, too. So, I'm feeling good here, that the team is feeling good. We're all doing well, and the residents continue to be doing well. So, we've got some good news to announce and some updates as far as procedures go. So, I'll go ahead and jump right in. Let's see here. The biggest question that I got from the community, you guys, was related to testing. So, now that we have a positive case, a resident who is in the building, actually out of rehab now, but it was in the building and possibly exposed others, the questions were, you know, "What kind of testing are we going to be doing?" So, what we were able to do is the team was able to identify three individuals, two residents and one staff member, who were in close proximity to that resident prior to their hospitalization. Those residents consented to testing. We were able to do those tests in-house, and all results have come back negative. We're happy to report. So, while we know that that is a small piece of tracing, you know, our small efforts there, we're definitely, you know, excited that, you know, that's evidence that points towards that there wasn't mass transmission. And just to go back real quick, guys, if you could hold all questions to the end and actually go ahead and utilize the chat box. Laura's going to be monitoring the chat box for us here, and we'll get to all your questions at the end. So, I'm going to go ahead and mute everybody at the moment. Let me see here, and all those folks as well that have been tested, they will remain on quarantine through the end of the week. That puts us at about two weeks, actually, two weeks since their last possible exposure. You've probably heard that there is a high false negative rating on some of these tests, 20 to 30%. By keeping them in quarantine, we are allowing to make sure that there's no false negatives, seeing if any symptoms arise after that period. All right, so we don't have any current residents with any symptoms or any symptoms or any test pending. We do have one staff member out right now with a test pending related to COVID symptoms. This is not uncommon. We've done quite a bit of testing here with anybody, with even any minor symptoms. So, we're taking them all very seriously, getting consent from both staff and residents, family members, to be able to test, you know, really for the greater good of the community, so we know what we're dealing with here. Also, like to share, should have shared this first, but have been in frequent contact with the resident who was diagnosed COVID positive. They remain in great spirits. Again, they're in rehab now, so already out of the hospital, being treated for non-COVID-related diagnoses. That person is eager to get through the process and be back in the community that he loves, but it's going to be two negative tests before that person is able to return. So, happy to know that their health is doing well and spirits are up as well. Let's see, the other common question I've gotten is more of a general question, but "What are we doing now here at the community in response, in addition to the new news that we have a positive in the building, had a positive case in the building?" So, here's kind of some bullet points that we have done or are doing or plan to do in the near future. Basically, we plan to continue testing. That's going to be strategically approached, so anyone who has any symptoms, staff or residents, as well as anyone who's had possible exposure to someone who's tested positive. So, that's going to be ongoing. We, Balfour has been able to acquire a good number of tests, so I have, I think it's 15 tests onsite right now that we can test someone pretty quickly. We're getting results anywhere from two to five days. It's, the last couple have come back in right about two days, the results, so pretty quick. And again, we are, if we're testing somebody, we're treating them as presumptive positives, so those people are either being quarantined here in the building or they're being kept out of work until we can confirm a negative. All group activities at this point have been canceled. We are shifting to more of a one-on-one and room-based approach to programming at this point. Laura's going to be on in a little bit to speak a little bit further about that. I just saw something really fun roll by my office right before we started the call, actually. They put together an ice cream cart with the music, the ice cream costumes, and the whole kit up. So, they're trying to be, have fun with the situation and keep the residents engaged and keep them happy. But Laura will have more details on that. Let's see here, we remain in really close communication with our local and state health departments. We actually had a survey onsite here on the 29th of April. The state of Colorado did an infection control and COVID preparedness survey. So, you've probably seen this on the news that they're going to be out and about and doing this. Extremely happy to report that the state applauded all of our efforts, even saying that, you know, "We were really being proactive and going beyond what their recommendations consisted of." So, you know, that we're definitely encouraged by that and, you know, know that we're doing all the right things and then some, as far as prevention goes. I also had a call with the Denver Department of Public Health and Environment on Monday of this week, and they kind of did a survey over the phone with me on what we're doing, what we've done. And they also have cleared us and said that we are deficiency-free and that we are setting the right example for other communities and what should be done. One recommendation that came out of that, that we actually put into place yesterday, this comes from Denver Department of Public Health again, is that we've had to shut down community areas, all communal areas within the community. So, it's on my boss this morning, it's a lot of caution tape around here, and some of your residents may have, some of your loved ones may have shared with you that there's more changes here. So, yeah, we've had to push some furniture together in common areas to discourage social gatherings, encourage social distancing. So, that is one of the main physical changes you'll see onsite here and your loved ones may be talking about. In the last two weeks, we were able to get to a point where we have enough hand sanitizer onsite that I was able to distribute hand sanitizer outside of every single assisted living apartment, so that we, in addition to frequent hand washing, that we are able to sanitize before entering rooms. Doesn't take a place, of course, of hand washing, it's only in addition. So, definitely excited about being able to do that, and actually, residents once explained to them that it wasn't their personal hand sanitizer we're excited about, the reason why. Let's see, another big thing that residents may be talking about is masks. So, not only is the staff wearing masks, which we have been and will continue to be doing for the foreseeable future, residents now who are in any common areas are being coached, encouraged, supported to wear masks throughout the building. Surprisingly, this has gone very well. It's just kind of those common reminders that, you know, the nose and the mouth have to be covered up for it to be effective. We are managing the maintenance of that program. We have both the paper masks, the surgical masks, as well as cloth masks. Thank you to some of you family members who donated those. The cloth mask, we are taking daily lists of those, who has those, and tracking those up at the end of the day so they can be washed. They're a one-day, one-use kind of thing. So, we have plenty onsite, and residents are taking advantage of using those. Let me see, another question that I've been getting, not necessarily in relation to the positive case, but just more in relation to their loved ones and their medical needs. We've got, I know we've got a lot of appointments that we've put off in the past two and a half months, some medical, some dental. These are going to be, continue to be put off for right now, but I understand that these can't go on forever. So, I'm having individual conversations with residents and their families about, just to kind of assess the necessity versus the risk associated. We have made some decisions recently, you know, combination to allow some outside visits, but the person is going to have to quarantine two weeks upon return. So, it's kind of that risk benefit, knowing that, you know, upon return that they won't be able to leave their room for two weeks. So, if you want to have that discussion offline, I'm happy to, you know, those are pretty much ongoing. I realize that some of our residents, you know, are overdue for cortisone shots, they need shots for their glaucoma, macular degeneration, that they can only wait so long. So, we're taking it case by case, and we'd be happy to discuss that further. So, as far as resident monitoring goes, we've actually increased, this has been about a week and a half now, but every day we were taking residents' temperature twice daily. We're now at a point where we're taking a full set of vital signs twice daily. All the new COVID research, the health experts are saying that, you know, the symptoms vary so differently between individuals, between ages, so we're going ahead to go, we're going ahead to get a full set of vitals, just to make sure that there's nothing else going on. So, your loved ones may be talking about how we are spending more time with them and more blood pressure cuffs and pulse oximeters on their fingers, but that's just, again, another preventative measure that we're taking to try to stay ahead of this. The last major change, we're not fully in effect yet, but we, Becky especially, is working really hard on separating out our staff and our approach, so that memory care is a whole separate unit. So, we're not crossing over basically at all between units, myself included. Basically, we're trying to prevent that if, if or when something is in the community, we're trying to protect either or, so that if it's in memory care, we're not crossing over to AL and AL not crossing over to memory care. So, a lot bigger task than it seems. We've got, you know, care staff, we've got kitchen staff, we've got laundry, we've got housekeeping, we have therapy and activities, and we're trying to manage and identify folks who's going to be where, because once we make those decisions, it's, you can't go backwards. But a big effort that the team and Becky especially is making to make this work and to do the best thing for all your loved ones here. Lastly, just kind of, a couple of other things, sorry, not lastly, got a couple more things. Our supply of PPE and disinfectant cleaning supplies remains strong. We continue to source multiple vendors to keep the supplies coming in. Our corporate office is also working extremely hard to support our efforts in this and reaching out to all kinds of new vendors and using eBay and Amazon and everything else that we can think of to get our hands on, keep our hands on all this necessary appropriate PPE equipment and disinfectants. With supplies PPE, per OSHA recommendations, we, Balfour as a company, has made the efforts of getting all of our, not all, but most of our staff fit-tested for the N95 masks. Most people don't know that those masks aren't effective in keeping out the 95% of particles if you're not fitted properly to the right mask for your face. So, we've been through that process, and we all have been issued masks that they work for us individually and to have the best fit there. So, that is exciting thing that I don't think, I haven't heard that any of my colleagues out there, any other communities or companies are doing is this fit testing. So, we're definitely happy that we've been able to have that opportunity. We talked about, oh, yeah, so just, yeah, definitely, we staying in touch with our state and local health departments and reporting as far as what our active cases are, and they're kind of giving us some guidance as well as, you know, "You're doing the right thing, maybe we should alter this a little bit," but really overwhelming positive feedback that we're on the right track. Let's see, at this time, Denver County is not considering our positive case in the building in outbreak. You probably have seen in the news, you know, the list of senior communities or licensed communities with outbreaks. The definition of that is very gray, but basically, it's based off of the size of the community and the percentage of positives you have. So, right now, with one positive in the case, we don't quite make that list, but I'm guessing that, you know, even one more possible symptom of a resident or staff that we may end up on that list, just so you guys know that, you know, I think they're publishing it every Wednesday, but there probably will be a point in time when Balfour Stapleton is on that list. Just know that you guys are still going to be the first ones to know. I would never let you read information about our community, the health and well-being of our community, in some news story without hearing it from me first. I think this is, yeah, probably the last thing. Employee appreciation support absolutely remains a focus for us. The burnout rate is extremely high, especially in times like this, and we're doing everything to combat that. So, we have had a really strong, consistent staff. We continue to have a strong and consistent, committed staff. We're doing quite a bit of daily, weekly things to recognize staff. One thing I wanted to announce, we are planning an employee appreciation party towards the end of the month, hopefully a barbecue out in the front lot, socially distanced, of course, so we'll have to, you know, think about logistics and maybe even how we can possibly incorporate families into that. But definitely, we're doing everything we can to recognize and appreciate all of our hard-working staff here. Yep, and then, I mean, for you guys, thank you. I just can't thank you enough for all of the outpouring of gift cards, meals for staff, cards and emails of support. You know, we get to share those daily, those positive encouraging words that you guys are sharing, you know, and it helps, it all helps. We're here, you know, with your loved ones. We wish you could be here with us, but since you can, we love all the support you're sending us digitally and from a distance, so keep it coming. And we have some special guests here today. I want to quick introduction, and they may have a few words, but I've got, Jeanette Allen is with us today. She's our VP of Care and Wellness. If you have any kind of more technical, clinical questions for our nurse leader of Balfour, she's with us, so that's Jeanette Allen. And then also, I believe Phil Barklow is with us as well. He's our chief operating officer. So, Jeanette, Phil, the entire corporate team, they are working just as hard behind the scenes, helping support myself and my team here. So, yeah, definitely, I'm glad to have them with us today, and I don't know, Jeanette, if you wanted to share anything, or?
Yeah. Great, great update, Tyler. Am I echoing? Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
So, the EverlyWell test that we have access to for our residents is a test that has a less than 3% false negative rate, so we're really happy to partner with them in order to bring this test to, with such great accuracy to the residents. And as our, as the testing capability in the community is increasing, we are encouraging our staff to use community resources for testing in order to conserve our EverlyWell tests for residents, because they are rather expensive, but we are paying for them, for our residents and staff currently who can't get access to community-based testing.
Awesome, and Jeanette has been our key, key person in supply acquisition. Her garage is like my office, it's like an Amazon distribution center, so.
Yes.
We've been making runs up to her when we're running low on things. Phil, was there anything you wanted to share today?
Yeah, Tyler, thanks for letting me attend, and hi to all of the family members in residents that might be on this call. I've had the pleasure of meeting many of you and like to see some of these familiar faces, so thank you so much for making time and allowing us to join the call. First and foremost, thank you for trusting us, you know, with your family member, with your loved one, or with your own personal care. We really appreciate, especially in times like this, the trust that you have put in us as leaders and the healthcare decisions that you have. I want to just publicly thank Tyler and the team. I did get a chance to see Bobby on the call as well, I can't see who else is on, but the entire team at Stapleton has just done a fantastic job, in addition to all of our leaders in the communities and managers and frontline employees of all of our communities. We have 1,000 or so residents and just under 1,000 employees, and we have an incredibly low penetration rate to COVID in our communities. So, I just could not be more appreciative of the efforts that the team has made and the leadership that Tyler and his team have showed. So, thank you so much for that. I also want to back up just kind of the comments that Jeanette had about this PPE. It's been top of mind for us. We made a very challenging decision very early on in this process, March 7th, to, you know, kind of implement some of the processes that were just not even guidance at that point, and limiting visitation, and I know that was very challenging for the residents and family members, but I do think that that effort that the community's made is truly why we have such a low penetration rate on COVID. So, I appreciate your patience on that, and we were sourcing PPE at the start of March. So, we, Jeanette's office, our corporate office, my garage at my house have PPE backup as a central supply for all of the communities, and we have been able to find access to every single PPE item that others are finding challenges with. So, really appreciate, again, all of the support you all have offered, and I'm happy, and Jeanette is also happy to answer any questions you have, more global or anything specific about Stapleton that you'd like to discuss.
Cool, and we're going to go ahead and hand off to Laura and Bobby and Melanie for some updates, just quick updates from their department, and then we'll open up for Q and A. Thanks, Phil, thanks, Jeanette.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I hear Bobby, you're ready to go.
Okay, so something that I've implemented in my department is, it's a PX300ES. It is a sanitizing station that I can sanitize the whole building that goes on my back, and it sprays a mist that will kill almost any virus or germs on any surface. So, currently, I am waiting for that to come in, and it's very simple, you just put water in there and the pellets, and just walk and spray, walk and spray.
That's great.
Also, for the comfort of the residents, I've ordered brand-new rocking chairs for outside the front, and they're really good rocking chairs, they're rated for 300 pounds, so they won't tear up in another year or so, so we'll be holding on to those for a couple years.
Those were on Phil, by the way.
Yes, thank you, Phil.
Phil never tells Bobby no.
You're worth it.
And I just, you know, I have to give a shout-out to my staff every day for doing an amazing job of cleaning and keeping this building well-maintained, and I'll give it to Laura. Melanie?
Melanie. All right, hello, everybody. Therapy's still going strong, probably even stronger than it normally is. We're, the team's working hard to keep everybody as active as we can. We've had to make, obviously, some changes in our gym area. Everybody's wearing a mask if they are in the gym. We're making sure that we're practicing social distancing, and if you've seen our gym, pretty tiny, so only a few people in there at a time. The team here, obviously, isn't traveling between other facilities. We're definitely taking more vitals when we're seeing people and trying to keep track of any acute issues that are going on with people when we're working with them. We're making an extra effort just to clean equipment down between every use. Normally, the gym is pretty busy even on off-hours, but just to make sure everybody's staying safe, we're only allowing people in the gym when there's a staff member present, just so that we know the equipment's being cleaned properly.
Melanie, that's great, because that's in the new guidance I just read from the state.
Okay, good, yeah, we, our gym has never been so clean. So, everybody's doing a great job with that. We did, we always do our morning movement class, we did add an additional morning movement class, and we're just, we've changed the class so that we're following the protocols that the activity department's been giving for group activities. And other than that, we're just keeping everybody going.
So, how do I get a Balfour haircut, Melanie, if I wanted to get a Balfour haircut?
I forgot the most important thing. We've learned a new skill in the therapy department, and we are also giving haircuts, so.
Open for business.
We are open for business. We have told people they can't complain, because this is not our primary profession, but they've been happy so far. So, we've given quite, men and women's haircuts. I'll come find you.
Awesome, thanks, Melanie.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Laura.
Just wanted to give a quick update about activities. So, like Tyler said, we did sort of restructure them a little bit. Obviously, we're still trying to make sure to keep all of our residents very active and very happy. So, our main transition is that we are now doing more of hallway or doorway activities or individual activities. Mainly, we are trying to just keep everyone closer to their rooms for the activities, since, you know, getting together in groups is not allowed anymore. But we are doing amazing things. Tyler was kind enough to order us a few new carts, so we have a new utility cart that we're going to be using for crafts and bringing around supplies to everyone, bringing around anything that, you know, they might need for a specific activity, as well as a little fancier of a cart for hydration, as well as, you know, if we want to do a high tea delivery, we can bring high tea and still have a great display for all of our residents to enjoy as well. So, we have two new lovely carts that we are very excited about. We are trying to keep most of our activities that we were doing before, at least as much as we can, just kind of shifting how they're done. So, we're doing hallway bingo or, you know, hallway putt-putt, we're sanitizing everything with wipes and making sure everybody has their, you know, good hand sanitizer, washes their hands before touching anything. We're, you know, making sure to wipe everything down, keep everyone distant, but, you know, we're also encouraging lots of outdoor walks to get them out and mobile, to get them out and get some fresh air, as long as they're wearing a mask, and again, we're keeping them as socially distanced as possible. But other than that, you know, we're trying to do the best we can, and we're always open to ideas and suggestions, but we're just looking forward to some fun.
Always evolving, thanks, Laura. Well, with that, then, I think we will open it up to some questions and answers. So, I think the best is going to be, you can either take yourself off mute or go ahead and type in the chat box there what your question is. Oh, Howard is saying, "How would you request a haircut?" You can let the front desk know, you can let me know. Yeah, so the therapy team, we did acquire some new equipment to cut here, so not the salon style, but we've actually had probably half a dozen successful cuts already. So, not saying how many unsuccessful cuts, but I know half a dozen successful, so we'll go from there, and yes, we'll get Sylvia on the list if you would like, Howard.
And are you charging for that?
No, no charge and no guarantee either.
So, it's not guaranteed.
Yes, yes.
Tyler, I see a question about projection of when we might return to outdoor distance visits. I am asking this question daily or weekly of the health department, sometimes twice weekly. At this point, they have still said no, but I will be asking again on Monday. I feel like we should, we should keep pushing that issue so that we can do some outside distance visits. We also had a question from a family at Littleton that there's a YouTube video going around of a booth, you know, it's a plexiglass booth made with some wood framing, and I've asked the state, "Could we do something like that?" So, they've posed that question as well. So, as I get more information, you will be the first to know.
And Jeanette, I guess you just implied the answer, but it's the state health department that you're asking this of?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Awesome, and it looks like Susan has asked, "Will you be scheduling mobile dentists to come to Balfour?" So, right now, we have our local, I mean, our mobile dentists, our mobile podiatrist and audiologist, they're all taking cases by acute basis, so they're not doing regular routine visits, and in addition, you know, we will have to do the 14-day quarantine for folks who have seen those outside providers. So, again, it's going to be that individual conversation with the resident and their family and the doctor to really determine that necessity and risk. So, yeah, so on a case-by-case basis, we will be having mobile dentists onsite.
It looks like there's some that are turned off on the chat that we can't submit questions.
Uh-oh, well, go ahead, Pam, I hear you loud and clear.
I don't have one right now, I just was going to write one, and I've just had problems with my microphone, so I had to switch devices, but I'll try to do some troubleshooting with somebody after this is over, if anybody else needs that kind of assistance, dot, dot, dot.
Michelle has a great question, too, about what will permanently change. We've had some discussions about that, the executive team, you know, Phil and Nora and Brandy and I, we feel like...
we feel like the restriction on having staff work in only one community, not working in multiple senior care communities or nursing homes, is probably something that is going to be an industry change. Definitely considering it as a potential Balfour change moving forward, because that is one of the biggest ways to spread the community-based transmission. The other thing we haven't talked a whole lot about is, you know, we have asked our vendor partner, vendor partners, home health and hospice right now to dedicate staff to our building only or to a couple buildings that are COVID-19 free. And we have really seen some great partnerships develop out of that. That might be something that we look at moving forward, keeping that in place too. So that, it might mean we only work with two home health companies or two hospice companies and have limited choices, but that is going to probably be a continued need to keep COVID-19 out of the buildings.
Maybe I can add just a little bit to that, Jeanette, I appreciate it. It definitely is something that we're looking at as a company. It's not something that I see in the foreseeable future as an industry change. I don't think others are looking at this. And I'm on lots of calls with our contemporaries in the industry and, and most have not done that, you know, restricting hospice or home health or anything to just isolate in one building. But, but we have company-wide, so it's something that we've found very effective. We do have an infection and outbreak protocol that is very baked. And if this, if, if the policies and changes that have been implemented feel a little bit clunky, I can assure you that that's because the information and, and what we've been getting from the health departments, the local municipalities and the governors are changing constantly. We've got an entire task force team at the corporate office that's just monitoring the communication from the federal government, the CDC, the health department. And it changes literally daily. So it's, it's not our intention to have it feel clunky and we want to take the burden off of trying to figure it all out from the communities. And we're giving the directives as they change. And I do feel obliged to point out the fact that there are things that you might hear in the media or things that you might hear in press conferences that are politically biased and are not reality. You know, so we are committed to getting you as much clear information and factual information as we possibly can when we know it and getting it out through the executive directors as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Tyler, I have one specific question also.
Yes, yeah.
Am I on, no, you can hear me.
Yes.
Will the memory care residents no longer go to the therapy, Jen?
So no, they're, right now, we're on a two-week hold for therapy. We decided to see how things go for two weeks as far as both our community transmission and what evidence we have that things are looking good or maybe we should hold off a little bit, as well as the resident needs. So it's, it's that fine balance. You know, Melanie and I are in conversations about, you know, maybe we can dedicate one therapist to the memory care area, maybe just one discipline, but so that they have their needs met as well, so.
Really, thank you.
I have one suggestion that I'd like to, to suggest at the front door. I was delivering some supplies and in back in my car and I saw a floral delivery person arrive and just march right into the front desk without any, you know, any barrier or whatever. But I'd love to see a sign that's a little more visible, do not enter without permission or do not enter without whatever. But I just witnessed it and it was like, you know, how we are all so, we're sensitive about non-masks and all that. He had no mask, no gloves and just marched into the front desk. So just something more visible to get people to sort of stop.
Definitely, no, well, absolutely, we can take a look at that. That's an easy thing to do and a great recommendation. Thanks, Pam. Any other questions right now? You guys all have my number, you know how to get ahold of me personally, so don't hesitate to do that as well. If, if that's a question, yes.
And I just want to say, thanks for being so responsive. I mean, you answer the phone, you return voicemails, you and your whole team are just so responsive. Couldn't appreciate it more. Thank you very much.
That's definitely been a focus for us that, you know, it's our, you know, primary job to keep you guys in the loop since you can't be here physically. So absolutely, we'll go ahead and wrap up today's call, guys. We'll plan on about two weeks out for another call. Unless we have any major updates between now and then, I will keep continuing to send updates through Life Loop. So those announcements you guys see. And hopefully next time I've asked our, our doctor with Bloom Healthcare, Dr. Wang to join us for that call. So we're looking forward to that and hopefully see all of you guys and talk to you soon. So thank you for taking time out of your afternoon.
Thank you, everybody.
Hi, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yep, absolutely.
Hey. Bye.